By Pastor Jason Carr of the Apostolic Church. Everyone, if you please choose to, please stand for the prayer and remain standing for our nation's flag. And I will ask that you please silence your cellphones. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, City Council, may I first say it's an honor and privilege to be asked to be able to say this prayer. And I wanted specifically to mention that the council on Getz, now, we are saying many prayers for your precious wife during this time. And so thank you, Phil, to you, to be here. Lord Jesus, we come before you right now thankful for your presence, thankful for your Spirit. And I ask you, Lord, right now, that you would give wisdom. If anyone lacked wisdom, let them ask, and you would give it, Lord. And we are asking for a liberal touch of your wisdom right now, Lord. Pray that you direct and guide this time of work and session together, that your Spirit be here leading us. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, pray. Amen.
Amen. Our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Carr.
May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations or recognitions on today. Now is the time for any citizen who wish to speak. You would like to make comment, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Turn it into the clerk to the front of the room. You will have three minutes to speak when she called your name. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Gary Robbins, 9805 Phelan Boulevard, Belmont, Texas, item A on the consent and item number three on the regular agenda.
Thank you.
My time started, a lot of you know me, some of you have been with me, a lot of you don't know me. I've only been up here about 10 times in the last 30 years, 35 years. But what I'm here today to address y'all as a council, which are represented for the citizens of Beaumont, is a fact. And Mr. Getz and I have had this conversation a couple times, is a low-income senior living housing that's being built over on Phelan Boulevard. I own the 10 acres right across the street from there. Now, they know that, Mr. Haynes knows that. And this-
What's the matter? Oh, anyhow, the dealings that they're doing here, it's the second time this has been attempted. Whenever it was first sent out, the letters for property owners were that it was going to be a senior living facility, senior living, 55 and older. I said, okay, that's fine. 55-year-old people, they need to have a place to live, a senior, low-income, whatever. I have no problem with that. It was tried once before, planning and zoning, and they were going to take and put a low-income housing facility there for anybody. Now, I know what I'm talking about. We have rental property, we're into Section 8 housing, HUD, and all this other. So I'm telling you from what I know. I found out approximately a week and a half, two weeks ago, a month ago, I approached Mr. Getz, I called him, and I said, I found out that it's not going to be a low-income senior living facility, HUD or housing putting the money in there. Now, the council, according to last week, I might be wrong, that y'all decided to go ahead and move forward on this to allow low-income housing there. My complaint is, and my gripe is, there's a statute in the state of Texas that there's no drugs and so forth, and liquor stores and so forth, built within a thousand foot of a school or a church. You're 55 foot from the biggest high school in Beaumont, 55 foot. I know, I know about the traffic, I know about the drug dealing, I know about all that that goes on, they constantly going through my property, going behind me to Amelia. That's why I'm here. My wife told me, don't act a butt. I'm trying not to, I'm trying to be very polite. My request to y'all as council, do not move forward on this until after all legal aspects, according to the company that's building that facility, is spelled out through the permit office that is 55 and older, 95% of it. That's what I'm requesting y'all to do, that's what I'm asking you to do, before it goes to a further step, a next step up. And my home was at 9805 Phelan until it was burnt down July 18th last year, okay? My house right across the street was burnt down by the kids at the high school. I know that for a fact, they burned it twice. Now, I'm gonna get down here before I get upset. You got any question, Ms. Muton?
Thank you, no, sir, I can't ask any questions. Thank you.
Claire Dykman, 1479 Continental, Beaumont, Texas, item number four on the regular agenda.
I'm gonna take my mask off so y'all can hear me. My name is Claire Dykman, I was born and raised in Beaumont. I am here representing on behalf of A1 Construction Services. The company is not local, though I consider myself local. I spoke with the engineering department, and it came to my attention that the belief is that the city is obligated to go with the lowest price. And I wanted to clarify, A1 Construction Services, we came in with the second lowest bid for the fleet management parking lot, and that per the bid instructions, the government code, the criteria outlined in the bid, and the city charter of Beaumont, and I have those provisions if y'all want them, the obligation is actually to go with the lowest responsible bidder or the best value. And it is my position that A1 Construction represents the best value, and that the fact that the lowest bid is $150,000 lower than the next bid should raise a red flag about something, that there could be a problem down the road. I'm a bow hunter, and what that means is I focus on grouping when you shoot a target. And if we look at the bids responses and the bid tab here, the next four bids are all $1.7 million. The lowest bid by Elite came in at $1.5 million. Even the estimated budget by the city engineer is 1.6. So that 1.5 number should raise a red flag and ask the city council to look again at what is the best value. And the best value considers eight criteria, only one of which is the price. When you look at A1 Construction's 30-year history of paving, our lack of lawsuits, if you drive down Edson Road in Beaumont, that's paved by us. This is our bread and butter. Any memorial hospital facility, we've built that parking lot, we've maintained that parking lot. Our reputation speaks for itself. That is a criteria. That's one of the eight. And there must be, when you see a red flag on the lowest bid, you should look to those next criteria. Also, I know preferential treatment is given to local companies. The lowest bid here, when I looked it up, and I could stand corrected, is out of Kirbyville. The definition for a local bidder to be given a 3% preferential treatment is defined as having an office in the city limits of Beaumont. So the low bid should not meet that requirement, and A1 is then again the next lowest bid. Also, the part of the best value is to look at the long-term municipality value, and A1 can offer that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Turner.
Item B, do we have a timeline on the splash pad at the Sprott Park? Can we kind of know expectation when we kind of know when it may be complete?
There's no guarantees, and we were gonna, if the council approves it today, we'll get it as soon as we can, but a lot of items, as you know, are on back order and can't commit to you a timeline.
Okay, one more question.
Any other discussion?
It's a lot of, I would say misinformation and inquiries about item number G. Could our city attorney kind of explain in depth the, how the lawsuit came about, and, you know, will it affect people's streaming services?
Without going too much into the basis of the lawsuit, this is basically a case to collect video streaming provider fees. There's a statute that allows for cities to receive 5% from streaming companies. These companies that we've identified have not paid those fees, and the city attorney's office is requesting that we join with other cities in pursuing a lawsuit to reclaim those fees. It's my understanding that these won't impact fees, as you know Netflix raised their fees quite a bit, and so did Disney during the pandemic, and they weren't paying these fees to begin with. So these are fees based on their revenue streams, and it won't require, in my opinion, any, won't affect the basic citizen.
Thank you.
So we're not canceling anybody's subscription in the city or anything like that.
Yeah, I got two calls about that, that's why I said I would ask.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Mayor and council, item number one is an ordinance by the city council of the city of Beaumont, Texas, declining to approve the change in rates requested in Entergy Texas Inc.'s statement of intent filed with the city on January 31st, 2022, and finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance was considered was open to the public and in accordance with Texas law. And the city attorney, Mrs. Reed, will lead the item.
So as you recall, we came to you before and asking that we be allowed to join in staying deregulated and competing rates. This is something that comes before you annually, our utility council down line and looked at it and agrees that we should deny it, which will allow it to be reviewed by utilities council and potentially negotiate better rates for the city.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Need a motion.
I'm sorry. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow the construction of a cellular tower in a GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district located at 5580 Cole Street, the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Tower Ventures is requesting an extension for a specific use permit that was issued in February of 2020 to construct a 180-foot tower at the rear of 5580 Cole Street. The applicant is requesting additional time due to delays, delays caused by COVID-19. The administration recommends approval of a new deadline of February 15th, 2023, with four conditions that are listed in your council memorandum.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Mayor and council, item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Greenspaces 6 LLC of Baytown for the concrete pavement repair citywide Phase II project. The project consists of removing and replacing concrete pavement, concrete curbs, and all other work related to concrete repair. The project is in the amount of $2,397,669.50. A total of 365 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, with this item, it appears a little questionable to me that the engineering was proposing that the project be about 3.2 million, and it came in with Greenscape with 2.3. That's over, that's just about a million dollars off from what our staff estimation was. Can you kind of help me?
Do you have anything you could add?
Greenscape is trying to get more into the concrete business. They did a concrete pad for us out at the sewer plant, and they had expressed a desire to grow their concrete business, so they gave us a very aggressive bid on this. There's a lower price for concrete involved in it. We've checked with them after the bid, they're fully willing and capable to move forward with it, so they stand behind their bid.
Okay, and I would ask, and how does staff look at that if later, if it is awarded to them, and they later come back with change orders in an effort to offset a possible loss, or just, how do we deal with that?
So staff will estimate a project, and then if the bid comes in a lot lower, we'll contact them, or staff does, and say, look, sure you can do this work, or you think you can? And they say yes, then we move forward, make a recommendation to y'all. So staff's really good at holding change orders down, meaning they've got to justify it, and if staff agrees with it, then we recommend a change order to y'all. Anything over $10,000 or 10% we bring to the council. So it's something they're on top of, and rarely does a contractor not fulfill their obligations. And when they don't, we go to the city attorney and work through that process, so it doesn't happen very often.
Yeah, a change order would have to be additional work on top of what's in the current bid. It wouldn't correct their bid in any way.
Councilmember Durio.
Is there a list of particular streets where this work is going to be done, or is it just as needed, or?
No, sir, it's called out explicitly in the bid, and it's split across the four wards. We try to, as you know, split the street rehab as a whole across the four wards. The asphalt street rehab was, had a slight bit less in Ward 2, the concrete has a slight bit more in Ward 2, so that between the two, it's fairly equally split.
Councilmember Turner.
Bart, is this information accessible for the citizens online to look at, you know, what streets are kind of projected to be looked into?
Yes, sir, all our rehabs will be posted on the web, so I don't know if this is there yet, but once the contract's awarded, we'll have all the streets listed, and then as we construct them, we'll keep it up to date as far as what's done and what's yet to be done.
Thanks.
Mayor.
Councilmember Durio.
Do you have a timeline as to when this is going to get started, and about how long it's going to take?
It's, I think it was-
Can take an estimated 365 days, so one year. But normally, a contractor would mobilize within 60 days.
Should, should, but I don't have an exact mobilization date on me right now. I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Bart, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the works being spanned over 365 days and costs going up as we know it to be today, with the trucking situation being as we know it, that's a big difference, almost a million dollars difference. And so you're sure that they will stick to this $2,397 bid?
I'm sure that they're expressing confidence that they'll fulfill it at this price. If they don't, then we'd come back to you and look to go with somebody else to complete it at that point, so. But they're saying they're willing, they're confident in their bid, and they can get it done, so.
So we will not be tied into, and maybe that's a question for our city attorney. I mean, we're into a contract with them.
Right.
And then, at what point?
We only pay them for work done. So during that year, they'll submit pay orders during the year for the work that's been completed. We'll check that, make sure that it's inspected, it's been done properly, and we're accepting the work, and then we'll pay them for the work that's been accomplished. So we're not paying them upfront for anything that's not done.
So it's pay issue as the jobs are completed?
Yes, ma'am, it's paid after the work is finished.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Item number four is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Elite Contractors and Equipment Limited of Kirbyville for the fleet management parking lot reconstruction project Phase II. Phase II consists of reconstructing the northeast portion of the facility's parking lot. Additional improvements include replacing a portion of the perimeter fence and ditch modifications to improve the overall drainage. The engineer's estimate was 1.6 million, which is right at the low bid at $1,584,104. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Council, you've heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
So I'm looking at the bids and mindful of the discussion on the previous agenda item, and I'm seeing the same company that we just awarded to do our street concrete maintenance and repairs. Came in at twice the recommended engineering bid and was the most expensive. So I'm trying to reconcile that in my mind, and do you have any idea if they're aggressively trying to pursue contracts in the city of Beaumont, why they would come in at $3 million plus, and the low bidder here is 1.5?
We didn't explicitly ask them why they had bid so much on this particular project. Usually what a company will do is if they're hitting the limits of what they can accomplish with their current staff, they'll just bid way high on a project. If they get it, great, they plus up and do it. If they don't, then so be it. But we, I don't have an answer for why they were the highest on this versus the lowest on the other.
And then one other question, mindful of the comments made prior to taking this up by the representative of A1. Was Elite given a local discount even though they're in Kirbyville?
No, sir.
Okay.
In fact, we cannot give a local bidder discount on construction projects unless they're under, I think it's 100,000 or 150,000, fairly low number, so it's rare that it comes up with a public works contract that we can give a local exception on it.
Do we have experience with Elite and other projects that you're aware of?
They've done projects locally. I don't know that they've done anything for us, at least recently, but we did check references, and they bore out, and they're willing to stand behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Mayor and council, item- Item number five is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Gulf Coast, a CRH company of Beaumont for the Spindletop Avenue roadway and drainage rehabilitation project. The project consists of resurfacing the roadway, removing and replacing driveway culverts, and regrading the drainage ditches. The contract is in the amount of $508,223. On January 11th of this year, the council authorized an interlocal agreement with Jefferson County to reimburse the city for 50% of the cost, not to exceed $265,000. Funds are available in the capital program. I'd like to thank Bart Varcoyak for his work on this. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Boone. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon.
I'm gonna read the caption real quick. There's a discussion item today that Chris Boone's going to leave. It's to review and discuss two requests from developers for support of affordable housing
So for those of y'all who have been on the council for a while, you know about this time every year, we have applicants, developers come to us requesting our acknowledgement and support for housing tax credit projects. But for the sake of the audience and newer members, the housing tax credit program is an affordable housing program set up by the federal government. And the way it works is they allocate tax credits to every state, and then every state's housing agency, they allocate those tax credits to developers to develop low-to-moderate-income housing in the form of tax credits. But part of that process is a, it's very competitive for these 9% credits, and it's done according to a scoring system. And so the scoring system, of course, will score a project based on a number of factors, including quality development, the number of units, the affordability, breakdown, et cetera. But also, part of that consideration is to what extent a city or local government supports a particular project. So that's kind of a summary of the tax credit program, but let me walk through kind of where we are now and the next steps in the process. So right now, again, we're discussing the two projects that have been submitted to the council for consideration this year. The final applications by the developer to the state are due by March 1st, so coming up quickly. And again, as mentioned, the process is competitive. In the state of Texas, the program is administered by the TDAHCA, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Usually, the wards are eventually made in the summer, and the development typically will start in the following calendar year. As mentioned, depending on the location of the development, there are certain requirements that may or may not have to be made. There's also certain levels of support that can help a development move forward. One thing to point out is because Beaumont has more than twice the state average of affordable units per capita that are supported by housing tax credits or private activity bonds, that scoring process requires that the city council of Beaumont acknowledge that fact, okay? Also, it's the fourth point on this slide, but it's sort of relevant, is in certain census tracts, because of the concentration of affordable units, you also have to have an additional acknowledgement. So if you see there, the fourth point referring to Abiding Grace, which is one of the, one of the applications, we'll talk about it in a second, the council has to actually acknowledge the fact that there is a high concentration, 20% of the housing units, the households in that census tract where they're proposing- 20% of the housing units, the households in that census tract where they're proposing to put Abiding Grace are tax credit projects. So, going back to the second and third points, again, council, in order for these to move forward, council would need to acknowledge the two times issue. They may also offer support or no objection. And also, if a council or local government actually wants to support or encourage a project, they can actually offer funding support, which we've done in the past. And that typically can be in the form of a fee waiver of approximately $500. Just to give you a quick history on the housing tax credit projects that this council has supported in the recent past, going back to 2011. You see a list of them there. Most recently, you'll see 2021 is Pioneer Crossing. That's located on East Tex across from the, I believe it's the Tex dot office. This is a map of most of those housing tax credit projects that are in the city. And you can see they're fairly spread out there and you'll see them marked in the green dots. Now, one of the things I did want to bring up in your consideration of, you know, whether or not to move forward with any, either of the two projects, or both of the projects, is the fact that as a result of the recovery efforts of Hurricane Harvey, we've had several multifamily complexes that are either have recently opened or they are under construction currently. You may have seen, I think last week, there was Abbey Court, I believe, was one of the projects that had a grand opening. So, all of these projects are coming online currently. And this is a map, the green dots being the existing projects, the darker red dots, those are the Harvey projects that are all coming online roughly this year and next. So again, the applications themselves, and we do have, I believe we have representatives from each of the two applications. The first is Abiding Grace. I should point out, this is ITEX Houston, Texas, is where they're out of. I should point out, I think in your packet, in the announcement, the original request from ITEX was a location on College. They did contact us Friday afternoon pretty late and requested that they, we changed their application up. And so we were able to adjust these slides. But this is the first application in question is Beaumont's ITEX is Abiding Grace, and they're proposing 84 to 100 family units. And the location of the proposed development is on West Cardinal, and it's just east of Fennett. And it's outlined there in red on your slide. And you'll see just to the north is, I believe, Place of Grace. And also, just to the northeast is Grace Lake Estates. I believe both of those were developed by ITEX. And this is a rendering of an elevation that they provided as to what the apartment complex might look like. And this is a conceptual site plan of what the development might look like. And I'll go ahead and go on to the next, and the second proposed application is Pioneer Crossing for seniors. This application is being made by Betco Housing out of Austin. The location of this project, southeast corner of Phelan and North Major Drive, and they're proposing a senior complex at approximately 72 to 80 units. This is approximately the location of the site. Again, you can see it's at the southeast corner of North Major and Phelan. And these are some photographs, which I think represent what they're roughly proposing for the site. And this is the conceptual site plan of the layout for the site. So again, we're coming to council asking for guidance because, as mentioned, the deadline is coming up. And if, the council, again, has the option to support neither project, one project, or both projects, and again, at different levels. But staff is just looking for your guidance as to how to move forward. Because if there is a desire to move forward, we need to bring those to you at next council meeting. And with that, are there any questions? And me, and again, both applicants do have representatives here for specific questions.
Counsel member Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in one of the previous slides, you said that we have two times the average. What's the waiting list for these currently looking like?
So, again, I would direct you to ask questions of the developers. As part of their process, they do submit a market feasibility study. And so they might have that kind of granular data that we don't have access to.
Is that accurate information, or is that just their assumption?
So, one of the reasons I brought up Harvey, and I should say, when we talk about Harvey, they're not necessarily the exact same types of projects. And each of the developers can explain kind of what their target market is. So some are what we call family, which is general, some is senior, which is age restricted. But the Harvey, they tend to focus on a little bit higher income, where I think it's 80% of the median family income up to market rate. Whereas, these developments, they may be more like 60% of median income. But again, they can give you a little more detail on that. But again, I brought up the Harvey, not necessarily because they're apples to apples in terms of who they're targeting, but just the sheer number of units that are being brought onto the market at the same time. So, you know, as part of the consideration, you know, any, any market feasibility study is gonna have to try and take that into account. But at the end of the day, many of these projects are not online yet. So we don't really know, you know, what the impact is gonna be to the market. So again, the question is, are we oversaturated, are we not? You know, an easy metric to look at is, you know, what's the vacancy rate, you know, across the city as a whole? What's the vacancy rate on the housing tax credit projects? And again, they should be able to give you some of those numbers.
Counsel member Turner.
So, to make sure I heard you correctly, you saying the two developers that's planning to come up should be able to give us some of those numbers?
I should think so, yes.
Okay.
And let me just give you a little bit of background information. This is, the source of this is Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. It's not really recent, goes back to 2019. But you can see Beaumont's vacancy rate at that time, according to the Census Bureau, 6.99% compared to Texas, which had a little bit higher vacancy rate at 8.15. And then the US lower at 5.97. And then you can see the graph at the bottom. Beaumont is shown in blue. Texas is in the darker gray, and the US is in that faint gray line. And I just put that little blurb in there. The question is, you know, what is a good vacancy rate for a community? And, you know, it really, it just depends vacancy rates. And the applicants can probably speak better to that than I can. But the vacancy rates tend to reflect unemployment rates in the economy. So as the unemployment rate goes up, you know, the vacancy rates start to go up. But I have that little blurb in there. That's from the Federal Reserve. You know, what's a typical vacancy rate? Going back to 1956, they estimate 7% to 8%. So if you look at Beaumont, again, going 2019, about 7%.
I'm sorry, Mr. Boone, you said 7?
Well, 6.99.
6.9.
Yes.
Seven. Any other discussion? Could we have them to come forward to?
I would invite, I think the first one on the list was the Abiding Grace applicant, application. I believe Kenny Baugh with ITEX is here.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muton, council members, staff, all those in attendance. My name is Kenny Baugh. I'm here representing the ITEX group. As Mr. Boone mentioned, I'm sorry. Let me introduce my colleague as well. Juhil Pareek is here with some additional information if we need it. I am here representing the ITEX group. As Mr. Boone mentioned, initially, we were proposing a project off of College. However, we felt that a project would be better suited in South Beaumont at the site that we're looking at right now. We were intending on doing a family project. And we're in partnership with Pastor Adolf and Antioch Baptist Church at a site directly west of there, of the church, and directly south of our other two projects. This particular site is eight acres. And the layout that you saw there earlier is generally what we're proposing for this particular site. It being a family development, we did feel like in partnering with the church, it would be walkable. Many of the residents would be able to stay at the project if they'd like. We also have had pretty good success at the other two projects that we have just north of this site. Right now, we're looking at occupancies at 94% and 95% at those two projects. Really good demand for the family units at the project there. I believe we have about a 200-person waitlist at our family project there, and another 25 or so on the waitlist for our senior development. So we did feel like this was a pretty good demand and a need for another family project in that particular area. So, I did wanna talk a little bit about just kind of the design of the project itself. I don't know, can I go back to this? Okay. There we go. Okay. So as mentioned, this would be about 84 units, 84 to 100 family units. These would be one, two, and three-bedroom units. So we would be accommodating for some of those larger family sizes. And then the rents would be at the 30, 50, and 60% AMI across those units. So we would be a little bit different than some of that other product that's coming online, where you add more of an 80% threshold. In terms of the construction itself, this would be more of a three-story garden-style construction with breezeways. This would be a smaller footprint. We're looking at about three buildings on this particular site, where we cover about five acres of the site. So you would have a pretty good amount of green space, another three acres or so that would be left over on this site. And we would have about three to four actual buildings on the site itself. The design of the site, as you see here, is a three-story walk-up. There would be a mix of cement, fiber siding, some hardy plank. Just a more kind of modern look to the development that we felt would blend in with our other two projects there as well. Some of the amenities that we would have would be a community center, a business center, fitness center. As you can see here on the proposed site plan, we would have a pool kind of centrally located, as well as some other green space and a courtyard there in the center of the site plan. And then our standard amenities that we put in most of our developments, we usually do nine-foot ceilings. We'll do granite countertops, wood flooring, wood cabinets, energy star, energy rated appliances, and just, you know, really, really nice finishes that are pretty comparable with your Class A to B-plus developments. So, what we will be looking at is really, like I said, we really wanna do a family deal because we felt like this particular area is better suited. As Mr. Boone mentioned, what we would be asking council for would be an exclusive resolution of support, which would include that two times per capita resolution, as well as acknowledgement that this particular census tract has 20% tax credit units, as well as a commitment of funding from the city. So, we do appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Well, you're committing to a family-style living, but you only have 24 two-bedrooms and only 12 three-bedrooms. But then you have 61 bedrooms. Why is that?
That is, that's what we're seeing the demand is at those other two projects that we have. A great demand of one-bedrooms. And then the mix is kind of consistent with what the market is. But we are more than happy to do something different with that unit mix if the city would like to see something a little different with the mix. But everything is pretty consistent with what we're seeing at the other projects and what we're seeing in our market studies.
Did you ever consider doing mod homes? On that property, mod, low to moderate houses?
I don't know that we did on this particular site. I'd have to get back with the team and see if that's something that we would, you know, we could consider.
And I understand you say that it's 200 people on the waiting list. So are you moving people out of older apartments to this new, or?
These are just people that are on our existing waiting list on those two properties.
Just on those two properties to get in?
Correct. So on Place of Grace, there's about 200 people on the waiting list. And then at our, I'm sorry, Grace Lake, there's about 200 people on the waiting list. At Place of Grace, there's about 20 to 25 on that current waiting list. As you know, we have Sunlight Manor, there's Virginia as well, that are in that same vicinity.
Absolutely.
I didn't check on those two waiting lists, but, you know, we do have a good amount of tenants that are still waiting on apartments in that area.
Okay. Counsel member Turner.
Out of curiosity, I noticed you said you decided to, you guys decided to move from College Street to this location. Can you give us a little bit more details on, you know, what made you guys come to that conclusion?
Well, that particular site, we felt like wasn't as best suited for a family deal. And then we also did realize that there were a good number of other developments that were coming online on that west side of town. So we wanted to pivot to this side, especially in partnering with Pastor Adolf and the church. So, it just seemed like a better suited project, looking at the demand for units and some of the interest that we have at our other two developments. This made a lot more sense.
Any other, counsel member Samuel?
You mentioned a commitment to funding. And what were you, what's your thoughts about that or expressed to me? Help me to understand.
Well, typically, this is just a minimal amount of funding from the city. $500 is basically the minimum that TDHCA asks that we request. This can be in a waiver of certain fees, or that's typically how it's done. But just $500 would be a commitment of funding from the city. And this just allows us to be more competitive in the process. It allows us to get a greater number of points in order to compete with the rest of the applications in the region.
Also, there are some that might not understand this competitive process. Would you kind of explain that so that it's understood to the average person?
So, we typically, this is a 9% application, which is the competitive application for low-income tax credits. Typically, developers will submit pre-applications around January. And it's all based on a scoring process. So there are a number of scoring items which allow you to compete with other developers in the region for the amount of credits that are available for that particular region.
And when you say region, what is the region?
So, this particular region is Region Five. And this would be Beaumont, it's urban Region Five, which includes Beaumont.
Well, expand on the region. As Beaumont? As Beaumont, Port Arthur?
Correct.
How far does it go?
Um, I, I don't have a map. I'd, I'd have to really break down, um, but typically, urban Five, we would be competing in Beaumont and Port Arthur area.
Okay, but it doesn't go, uh, beyond Lumberton, nor does it go, uh, as far as Orange, am I correct?
I am. It falls there, it falls urban and rural.
Is there, is there that you're?
Region Five goes all the way out to Bridge City, it goes, so, urban and rural compete differently, Lumberton would be rural, but, uh, the big cities, urban would be like Orange, Port Arthur, Manchester, Beatty, Beaumont, and, uh, Bridge City, I believe.
But Orange would not be in this region?
It, it, it would.
Oh, right. Okay, okay.
It, it would be in Region Five, and I'm sorry, the differentiation between rural and urban, I don't have in front of me. Um, but it was certainly the big urban markets are Port Arthur, uh, Beaumont.
Well, the reason I ask that is because I've been through this a, a couple of times, but a lot of people don't understand, these are competitive.
Right.
There are other applicants in other areas that's, uh, trying to get projects, and this region could lose a project be- to other areas, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So that's, I, I wanted to make sure this council understood what the tax credits are all about and the process for receiving the tax credits and how that impacts the project that you're actually applying for.
Sure, sure. And to your point, if there were an applicant in Port Arthur, for example, they would be, uh, competing for the same dollars that the city of Beaumont would be competing for. Um, so that's the competitiveness as you're speaking to in the process. So in terms of, of, uh, how competitive the process is, we, we submit applications that are based on a scoring criteria. Support from the city is one of the, one of those scoring items. Um, so we, you know, would need support from the city to really be competitive against anyone else that's applying. Um, size of units is another scoring criteria. A feasibility of your development is a scoring criteria. A support from, uh, state representative is another scoring criteria. Um, but there's a, a large number of scoring criteria that, you know, add up to, uh, uh, point total, and then those are measured against other applications in the process. And so those applications go in on March the first, several rounds of scoring, um, to come up with a final list, and then, uh, in July is when those tax credits are awarded to the developer, uh, in the project that wins the, the scoring and wins the award.
Councilmember Gates.
So there's two applications from Region Five urban areas. Is it assured that if the items that you're asking for are provided, that Region Five will get one of these projects, or is it possible that neither one of these projects will be awarded since they're competing with other applications from around the state?
One of these projects will be awarded for Region Five. Region Five has its own allocation of tax credits versus, say, Region Six, which is the Houston, uh, metropolitan area. Um, so each, each bucket, each region has its own bucket. So this region is assured to get a tax credit award on one of these projects. But only one of these projects, uh, will get awarded.
Any other discussion? Well, I would like to say with two hundred and twenty-five people on the waiting list for housing, I could see where we need to accommodate two hundred and twenty-five people that don't have housing available in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Mayor, I think this is Michael Beard with Betco.
Yes, Michael Beard, Betco Consulting. Um, I kind of wanted to speak to a couple of things. Uh, first, the demand, our analysis very much mimics his, uh, for senior in particular. The developments that we've polled are all a hundred percent occupied with waiting lists. We have not screened all of the tax credit properties yet, but the demand, our analyst says that there's about seventeen thousand unit demand currently in Beaumont. And if you use the TDHCA per- parameters and capture rates, our development would only capture four percent of the current demand, which is well below the ten percent capture rate. Beaumont is growing at a clip that it just can't keep up with, much like most of Texas. But I, I wanted to speak particularly to the claim that Five Urban is going to get a deal. There is no guarantee that Five Urban, particularly Beaumont, will get a deal. Last year in particular, y'all might remember Edson Lofts that came before council that, that garnered sole support, uh, as it was an existing structured, beautiful hotel that I wish would have actually gotten to the finish line. We were the compete- competing applicant against that development last year. And we combed that application, combed the development resume of the, of the competition, and deemed that they were putting sloppy applications together in this realm because they were used to competing in the four percent realm, very different from the nine percent. We took a calculated risk that they were going to trip up and not meet statute, which is twenty-three oh six of the Texas government code. And when that happens, your application's terminated and you cannot, you, you, you're done. We put an application in last year because we feared that that might happen to Beaumont and Beaumont would not get much-needed housing. We were very much down on points because we lost, we didn't get support, but we, everyone else, there were four applications that were pre-apps that came for support, everyone else but us backed down after Edson Lofts was supported, but we just felt there was, the risk was too great that a developer could put in something, get killed, and then Beaumont wouldn't get housing. So we, we rolled the dice, and now Beaumont got an award last year because of that. So to state that no matter what, Five Urban is going to get an award, to me is concerning, uh, only to the fact that these applications are thousands of pages by the time they're done. There's so many different areas, you can misstep and get terminated. Oftentimes, the top-scoring application doesn't get to the finish line. But to speak to the top-scoring application, our site, if you were, uh, if we could have gotten site control by the time pre-apps were due, our site was only one point off from a perfect score outside of two scoring criteria that, that we didn't get, which is historic and supportive housing. We weren't going for supportive housing and we did not have a certified historic structure. Our site checks every other score, scoring criteria box because it's in a census tract that has, um, high opportunity, low poverty, no other tax credit developments, let alone the twenty percent plus threshold criteria, proximity to amenities, great signage. It was great dirt. It just took us longer than we wanted to be able to get it under contract. But in spite of that, and in spite of losing six pre-app points, when this thing is so competitive that one point can kill you, our site is still such a high-scoring site that if we are all on equal footing, assuming we don't mess up in the application, which we don't usually, uh, we would, we, we would still be the highest-scoring site even after losing those six points.
Councilmember Neil.
You're from Austin, correct?
Correct.
Uh, your initial comment, you said Beaumont is growing just like all of Texas. Could you speak to that?
The demand for affordable housing in particular, um, has been exacerbated with, with the pandemic, supply chain issues, uh, the inflationary concerns, price concerns. I'm, I'm a, I'm a landlord myself, I've got a couple of rent, rental properties, and seeing those home appraisals go up makes me happy, but it also makes me sad that people are getting priced out in major metropolitan and even rural areas. The, the median home price in Texas clipped over three hundred thousand dollars, including rural. And that to me is, i- i- it, affordable housing has never been more of a crisis than it is right now. And when you're looking for a senior development, fifty-five plus, where most people are at or near retirement and on a fixed income, inflation's the number one killer for your ability to be able to pay your bills. My mom actually lives in a fifty-five and up tax credit apartment, and it's in San Marcos, and she's been there for ten years, and she would not be able to li- in fact, I have, my, me and my brother both have to give her, um, monthly gift for her to make the difference. And she isn't, she was not a person without means. It's just when you're single, and you can see the income, uh, band targets on one of the pages of the, the paperwork that I provided y'all. Ten percent of our units would be at the thirty percent clip, twenty percent would be at the, the fifty percent tip clip, and then the, the remainder would be at the sixty percent clip. Those are the income and rent targets for our developments for one and two bedrooms, split right down the middle at fifty-fifty. You think of a senior household living off of social security and, and, you know, drawing whatever pension or retirement they have, it's not hard to see how many people would meet those demand targets.
Do you have any three-bedroom apartments?
Seniors can't have three bedrooms, and, uh, you can't go over seventy-five percent on two bedrooms. And, uh, we, we just found that the man made most sense to be, not only from a design, but a demand standpoint, do a split down the middle, fifty-fifty. We did get a family award last year, apart from the overall demand just being there in Beaumont. We also didn't want to, we wanted to synergize our family development with the senior development to be able to, you know, hit both, both targets. It would be ADA compliant, we would have elevators, we're looking at elevation currently of about three stories. Great site, southeast corner of Phelma Major, it's already zoned, which was another reason that we love the site. Uh, similar sort of density as the competitor, and we would have ample green space as well, highly amenitized. You see some of those pictures there, those are our actual, every picture in that packet is from our, our portfolio, every single one. Those are all tax credit properties.
So this is strictly fifty-five and older?
Strictly fifty-five and older. Now, it should be known with the fifty-five and older election, that rule is that one person within the household has to be fifty-five or older. You could technically have someone below fifty-five, but TDHCA and the program requirements do not allow more than one and a half persons per room. And, you know, when you have two bedrooms, most, most number of people you can have is what, five?
So what's the demand, again, for senior housing, fifty-five and older?
Our current demand project, projection, after you back out, and, you know, Chris alluded to it, the, the Harvey properties are eighty percent to market rate, and really the eighty percent rent is almost market rate right now in this area. So even though they are getting disaster funds and helping to satisfy a need and, and get more product on the ground where it's very much needed from displacement and whatnot, those aren't going to really hurt our, our demand analysis. But the short answer, our current demand projection is out, after you net out the pipeline that's currently here, two thousand units that meet TDHCA threshold of capture rate for the area. But true income-qualified tenants in Beaumont, seventeen thousand, right now, seventeen thousand people, fifty-five plus, meet the income qualifications at the sixty percent or lower.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
How did you go about, how do you guys go about looking at the location, particular location you guys pick?
Uh, you have to start with scoring criteria, you have to go, so the three-point, I, a lot of the, a lot of the points are tied to development features and controllables, I call them. You know, if you meet certain, uh, percentages of income targets per unit and, and amenity features and price per square foot and all that, if you go outside of the controllables, there are three-point categories that differentiate developers right now in the tax credit nine percent, and that is, um, opportunity index, which if you're in a first, second, or third quartiles with a little bit of an exception, and you are at or below twenty percent poverty and within close proximity to a certain number of amenities, you get seven points. That's one point category that is, is crucial. The next one, underserved, that has to do with your census tract and its relativity to other tax credit developments in that census tract or around that census tract. That's up to a five-point category. We got four because that's one of the points we were missing. Our census tract has no other tax credit developments in it, but a perfect score in there would be your census tract, and every contiguous census tract doesn't have a tax credit development less than fifteen years old. That's a perfect score. We, we got the next best one at four. And then the third and the last point category that you need to be ti- to be tied into to get a successful award in this program, proximity to jobs. For Beaumont, you have to be within, is it two miles of sixteen thousand five hundred jobs to max out the points? And Beaumont, our site is. And so we maximize all but one on those three, and if we would have submitted a pre-app, I guarantee you, our site would be eleven points ahead of their, their site that they submitted.
Lastly, I noticed you said Beaumont is growing, and I kind of noticed Councilmember Neil asked that. Uh, the reality is our most recent census numbers, our population actually dropped. So when you say, you know, Beaumont is growing, I think that's why he wanted you to expand on, exactly what did you, what were you referring to as far as Beaumont growing?
I'm thinking more from economic development and then the senior population. You can't deny that economic development in the area, I mean, building, just from last year to this year, when I came in, I'm seeing new development everywhere. But the senior population in first, in particular, is growing.
Also, if your entire, um, complex was a one-bedroom, then you could control it being totally senior, correct? Or could you?
You, you, you could, but I don't know if from a feasibility standpoint, we haven't run a model at a hundred percent one-bedroom, that's, that's trying to capture a whole lot of units of just one. And my mom in particular, she lives in a two-bedroom just herself. Seniors accumulate stuff over years, you downsize, you go from a house, you have a big house with kids down to a smaller house, and then oft- oftentimes, the tenants in these, uh, fifty-five and up communities, they had houses, they didn't want to have to deal with the maintenance, they, they didn't want to have to keep with the upkeep of the yard, so they move into these retirement communities because they are that, they are retirement communities. They have, uh, twice-monthly services, uh, usually, all, all of our senior properties have a huge community room with a, a large TV and a food warmer so that you can have, uh, birthday parties, sing-alongs, crafts, uh, health services are provided, um, at least twice monthly. It's another point category, you have to provide certain services, you have to provide certain amenities, you have to provide certain onsite fit, like, um, um, facilities, and one of the big ones that we like to do is, uh, we like to do a community garden, especially in our senior projects, that's, that's something that, that, uh, people like to do, dog parks, lots of dogs in senior communities, and, uh, yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any of the questions, honestly, my mind, my mind just kind of got off track.
Councilmember Darian.
Are you partnered with anyone locally on this project?
Uh, hmm, so you mean like as far as, uh, construction-wise and whatnot? So, we're in the ve- imagine this as a rough business plan. This is, you put something together that, it is a business plan, it's going to have a financial model in it, it's going to have, uh, rough architectural plans, a survey, market analysis, um, rent demand, all of that stuff. It's all going to be in this application submitted to the state agency, and they review it. But then, after they go through their review and underwriting process, and then in July, when they, actually, the end of June, when they announce the awards, you have, uh, effectively till the, um, August, September to accept or to decline your award, and after that, you have to place in service two years later. And it's in that process between August, September until the next quarter, uh, or the first quarter of the next year, that's when you put all your team together. That's when you actually get all the partnership documents, get your construction, uh, team together. We, we do like to source out locally in our bids, um, wherever possible, and, uh, our de- our development portfolio is heavily weighted in Five. And our development portfolio is heavily weighted in five in particular. We've got three tax credit properties in Lufkin. We've got one in Diebel. We got one in Livingston. We have some non-tax credit properties in closer proximity, like in Coontz and whatnot. Those are actually DR developments. But we like five. We like it a lot.
What would be a reason for declining an award?
Well, actually, if you're really good and you get enough awards to where you go over your three million dollar cap, then you have to decline an award at that point because you can only accept three million dollars' worth of credits in an annual round. But another reason is, say, you don't have a zoned site, and then you don't get zoning by commitment, you are forced to decline your award at that point in time because you're required to have zoning by that stage. And this is a zoned site, so that is one of those risks that is not out there, which is another reason that we like this site. So... But it could be a number of things. You get down the road, you're financing your numbers and, you know, crunching the data. You can't get it to work, and/or interest rates tick up, you know, costs tick up. Like, we're being as conservative... We've increased our construction budget fifteen percent from even six months ago. And our interest is at a very, very conservative tick in our models. It's just, you have to be right now with the way it is. And, yeah, it could be any of those that can kill a deal.
So, go ahead. Councilmember Neil?
So are you planning on building this with Beaumont contractors, or are you bringing somebody from Austin?
Well, it would go out for a competitive bid, is what it would go. I know our civil engineer is Rick Freeman, and, you know, he's local.
Who is it?
Everett Griffin. I think they're... I mean, it's a nine-three-six area code.
That's not Beaumont.
Or nine-six... Well, no, but it's in the area. But, yeah, we put out to bid and give preferential treatment if local contractors are competitive. That's always, you know, it's always been our practice.
So how do you overcome the citizens that live in the area? And we've already had one that spoke against it from the beginning.
Well, actually, that citizen was speaking to another development that is not framing itself the way that he believed it was going to be, and he was in favor of a development that would be fifty-five and up. And ours is that. Once you make that election, it's irrevocable. It's recorded in a deed restriction document called a LURA, a land use restriction agreement. And that's with the county, and it's in effect for forty-five years. And it would very clearly have the elderly limitation stipulation recorded in that document. We would be breaking deed restrictions if we went outside of that. Our marketing materials have to go towards such. Our units have to be ADA compliant. Since we are multi-story, we're going to have to have elevators. It's not just an idea of being a retirement community. It is a fifty-five and up community.
Thank you. Councilmember Gads?
So did I understand you correctly to say that you made this application last year but were contending against the Edson Hotel Project? And that as a result of the council putting all of the support behind that one, you missed out on that opportunity last year? Is that right?
No, quite the opposite. We still went ahead and submitted a full application in spite of losing seventeen plus eight, twenty, twenty, whatever that is, twenty-five points. We lost twenty-five points by not getting support. We still submitted an application, twenty-six, because we also didn't get the local funding points.
You resubmitted an application for this funding cycle, so?
No, we submitted... That deal got awarded last year because Edson lost, got terminated. They didn't submit a market study in time. They didn't think they... Actually, it was a scope and cost review. They didn't think they needed it, and that's a threshold item, and TDHCA terminated them. And we saw their available materials from pre-application, and it was riddled with mistakes. And it's because they particularly are... Their experience was in the four percent tax credit program completely different. It's... You have the ability to kind of fix those sort of things throughout a timeline. With the nine percent, it's... You're axed if you miss things like that.
So you submitted the application last year, and you didn't get it. And when did you decide to make another run at this year?
We did get our application last year. Edson lost, then.
Councilman, just to clarify, that last... I think it was the last one on the list of the whole... The chronology of HTC applications, that last one, it's on East Tex, across from, I think it's Tex dot... That's their...
That's the one you're referring to?
That's our family one that we got last year.
Okay. So you didn't apply for this project that you're before us today on last year. This is a new?
This is a new one.
Okay.
Sorry, same name, just family senior.
Yeah, everything's Pioneer. So I understand that. When did you make the determination that you wanted to apply for a project at the corner of Phelan and Major?
We actually started negotiating on that site probably October. It just took a long time to finally get a contract. And then once we got a con... You can't submit a pre-app without a site control. So... But we knew that that... There was one census tract in Beaumont that would have scored better than this one, and that is just west of Major, just north of Phelan. There's a census tract carved out there. That's the one census tract that if a developer would've gone there, they would've had a perfect scoring site. But there was no dirt for sale. We looked, we combed, we constantly tried to find something. This was the next best dirt, and we loved the site, and that's why we picked it.
Okay, so I've got...
Sorry.
This happens to be in the portion of Beaumont that I serve.
Yes.
As well, too. In fact, my house is literally three blocks down the street from this proposed location. My concerns are primarily two.
Okay.
Hold on. Well, maybe three. Number one, you're coming in here right before the deadline, and so I have not had an adequate opportunity to visit with my constituents as to see how they feel about that. First and foremost, I am their representative.
Of course.
And I want to have the opportunity to see how my constituents, the people that voted for me and looked for me to be their voice, how they feel about this in the community, given the fact that it would be a senior project. So that's one concern. Number two, I have a concern as to how the currently under-construction senior project by Westbrook High School is going to affect the demand. That's a large project, and it's being run by Beaumont Housing Authority, which has a great track record of running senior projects. And I can look at the crossing over on East Lucas as an example. But that project, there are already broken dirt, they poured concrete. So I'm looking at that, and I want to see and have the opportunity to see how that impacts the demand on senior projects and how that increased traffic might affect that area of Phelan, which it will front on, just like, I presume, yours. And third, the issue of traffic is something that I would like to have the opportunity to talk about with city traffic engineers, because putting a multifamily housing project at the corner of Major and Phelan, where you've got train tracks right behind you, and when you've got a train, everything backs up, it gets real congested. I'd like to have the opportunity to talk to our city traffic engineer and get some thoughts on how all of that would impact, you know, the traffic in that particular very dense area. So could you speak to any of those things?
I could speak to all those to the best of my ability, and then in one additional one outside of that. And I do apologize for the truncated timeline. We reached out to your camp right after we got a contract. It was... Without a contract, this whole thing was moot. You know, if you don't have dirt, you don't have a development. So from that perspective, I apologize for the truncated timeline. From the perspective of the demand analysis and concerns there, TDHCA, since this is such a sought-after, oversubscribed, highly-needed program... It's the largest program they administer, by far, the largest one. And they have to go through two reviews before they recommend any one of these for an award. First is a programmatic review. That's where you're basically meeting state and federal statute requirements. If, after they deem that you've met the programmatic review and you are still the highest-scoring application, then you go through underwriting. And in underwriting, that's where they go through and scrub your financials. They scrub the market analysis. They scrub your costs. They scrub your development team. They see, can you actually get... Much like a city would. They're going to invest in you. They want to make sure this investment will actually be a successful investment. And if during that scrubbing analysis at the programmatic review or at the underwriting review, they deem that this is an infeasible or ineligible development, even if you're the highest-scoring one and they have that deemed concern, they will not recommend you an award. So from a state agency checks and balances perspective, they have an entire team that is going to scrub through this. On top of, you're going to have an equity investor, you're going to have a lender, and you're going to have the city. You've got so many different people scrubbing in on these developments that I promise you, if at any one point in time, one of those team members has a concern, that's when you get people returning credits or not accepting an award because it doesn't pencil out. So from that perspective, if the demand's not there, it's going to get caught. But we're having to put a lot of money in to even just get to this point. These applications, by the time you submit a full application, you're in the six figures, one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars on top of anything else. You don't just throw that kind of money around. You want this to be successful just as much as the city and the state does. So from that perspective, we're going to have skin in the game, and we're not going to just throw that money out without feeling like there's at least enough to warrant it. From the perspective of the traffic analysis, we have not performed that study. We would be submitting everything, and if it meets city zoning requirements and building code requirements, we would leave it up to y'all to give us any recommendations. It's obviously not going to be a permit-ready set of plans at this point, but I feel like that would be a process that would be done with the city to determine if anything needs to be done, if additional tie-ins or spread. We have a lot of dirt. You know, we've got six acres, and we currently have two entrances. They can be spread out farther. We have definitely set back off of the intersection because of that thought as well, that the farther away our entrances are from the intersection, the easier it'll be for ingress-egress purposes. So we have some ability and maneuverability with the site, given we're only doing eighty units on six acres. And I apologize. What was the third question?
No, you got it.
Okay.
Any other questions? No other questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Gads, could I approach the bench?
Sure.
Just to clarify on logistics of...
Could you identify who you're with?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Harvey Steinhagen, Beaumont, Texas, resident, a long time resident. And I own the actual hard corner, called the hard corner, the actual corner of the lighted intersection of this southeast quadrant of Phelan and Major Drive. And just to be clear, so the entire council has clarity on the Pioneer Crossing development does not go up to the intersection hard corner. There's approximately nine-tenths of a slightly under a full acre on the actual point of the corner of that intersection. And the six-acre tract that continuously wraps around the backside of that corner is the development pad in which Pioneer would develop the senior living facility on. And to finish my thoughts for clarity, is that it's the intent that I will develop a commercial center, a new center project on that corner, which could house tenants such as a Starbucks, or in my case, if I have preference, Black Rifle Coffee. But forthcoming, you'll hear more about them. But in any regard, Starbucks has no competitor. But in any regard, it's planned for a commercial, streamlined, modern commercial center on the corner with the Pioneer Crossing developed in the acreage behind it, which does follow the linear footage of the railroad tracks on the south side. You can picture the old Rice Drive that's been there my whole lifetime. It would... The facade of the new development would basically cover up a lot of that old light if you're in your vehicle going up and down Phelan Boulevard from either direction. And to lend a comment towards Michael's comments of the entries into Pioneer Crossing being pulled off of the lighted intersection for safety reasons and for particular noise reasons. It's senior, living. It will be... Will the entrances be gated, Michael?
That's an option, as an amenity?
It's been talked about, but I guess whatever's appropriate based on their engineering and ultimate complete design. But with the focus on senior, it's that. It's not HUD or other project-type developments. It's exclusive to that. I've made certain on purpose selfishly to confirm that. It is that with the amenities such as the gardening side of it, you know. Do people really care about that? Well, seniors do. Sometime, they need to get out on a good day and not just be inside all day. They need to get out. If they have a dog and they're allowed pets, they're going to have a special park for that, and quite a few amenities for the senior living individual. And what I have learned through this process is there is a market for that.
Councilmember Gads?
Harvey, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the noise, and one of the things that is a truism about this particular location is that there is a railroad track right behind where these apartments would be built. Now, it is in a quiet zone. The railroad does not always observe that regulation, especially when they're starting up. It appears that locomotives are parked back down west of the intersection of Major, and they stay there until they start up, and they frequently blow their horn to start up, which resonates throughout the area. And then, of course, as a train picks up, the reverberations from that train are felt throughout that whole area as they shake and rattle the houses and structures. And mine is off of Phelan, set back, and we feel it in our house. Shake the windows and the walls. I can only imagine, being closer, that that would also be a concern. Maybe Michael...
Councilmember Gads, you have touched on my absolute first-question concern of why this spot?
So maybe I see Michael's coming up, maybe to address that for a second.
Better you do it. I think I could, but better you than me.
So we also know it's a quiet zone, but aside from that, part of what we have to submit in our application is a phase-one ESA. And within that, they do the noise assessment. And if you are above the sixty-five decibel requirement, then it is deemed that you have to attenuate and mitigate. Mitigate's the favorite word in development community. Between the double-pane windows, there's actually a, like, radiant barrier that they could put inside the walls that they oftentimes put in music halls and things of that sort. Our architects and engineers, if it's deemed that there is a noise pollutant that is required mitigation, are beyond confident that they can do it. And that would actually have to, if it's an environmental... Recognized environmental condition that is established in the phase-one, you would have to develop, design, and build to meet any... to ex, meet and exceed the requirements as prescribed by, by HUD. And it would have to get tested and confirmed upon completion as part of a package that gets submitted to the agency. Because, basically, we're, we're telling the agency, TDHCA, what we're gonna do. They're going to see if they think we can do it. And then after they think we can do it, assuming they think we can do it, they would give us a chance to do it. And then once we do it, we gotta tell them and show them that we did it. And that's done through a whole nother process called a cost certification and a whole nother packet that basically says, here's everything we said we were gonna do, here's how we did it. And then they go and confirm it, and so...
So, does that cost certification occur before you break ground, or after you're...
After it's built.
So, what happens if you have built all this and it doesn't meet their criteria?
Then you spend more money until it does, and that's, you have to.
I just think that, uh, that's not an option to get to that point.
Yeah, so...
Hit the mark and maybe hit it flush.
So, we've, it wasn't us, but we knew a developer that did not meet an ADA requirement on their countertops in, in like thirty of their units. They had to go back out, rip out countertops, granite cabinets on thirty of their units, and re-comply to that requirement. Cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they had to do it, or they were not going to get there. So, this whole thing's a federal program. The state agency is the one that issues the Form 8609. That is what allows you to claim tax credits. If the state agency does not deem that you have met the requirements to get that said form, you never get your credits, end of story, and, so, yeah...
So, is there actually a possibility at the end, at the end of the road, you've built this project and you can't get your tax credits? You've actually just built this with, you know, investor money, and you're...
So, developers are on the hook, they are, it is a recourse obligation up until you get to that stage. Basically, and there's provisions all throughout the partnership agreements and the development documents. This is the, this is the development risk that you assume when you're going on these. You say, you're going to, you're gonna get this built on time, within, you know, your scope budget, or you're going to come to the table with the difference on your own skin in the game, and you're going to deliver these credits in a prescribed schedule because the investors are expecting this. This is how they determine their yield curve in investment. And if you don't do that, you have to make them whole. Because they only, they don't put in equity until they, they, they know that they're going to get their credits aside from...
Yeah, and I apologize for asking all these questions, but, you know, I'm a lawyer, so, you know...
And I'm, I'm a CPA, and that's how, that's how I got into this program, was...
So, let me, let me just kinda follow this logically through here. What if, and I, and I'm looking for disaster worst-case scenarios, what if you've built, you've built your project, you can't get the tax credits that you hoped for, and so you're now stuck with a project, it's the investor's money that was at risk? And you are no longer, I presume, since you're not getting tax credits, to honor your prior commitment of fifty-five and over, you're saying, well, we're walking away from tax credits, but we've got this project, we're just gonna make it into a family project? That could happen, yes?
If you get to the point where you are not getting your 8609s and are not claiming tax credits, you penciled this deal out at a seventy percent equity component and a thirty percent debt component. If you've lost your seventy percent equity component, you're going belly-up on this thing until you can make it whole to the investor. And it's not, it's not a, a, at that point, the developer has to, I mean, this, that's, that's catastrophic, basically.
Yeah, I said worst-case scenario.
And yes, that's catastrophic, so that, that, that is, that is where you could sink a developer if you do something like that, and that's where you have to look to see at the developer's history and how have they been able to do this. And if you look at one of the, actually two of the slides within those, uh, packets that I gave y'all, you could see just on the tax credit timeline, how many of these we've done, year after year, gotten them done. And, and some of these were in, you know, the oh-eight era, which was also not great. Um, and actually, just to dovetail into Chris's other comment of, of the market, um, typically goes in lockstep with unemployment. Well, if you're gonna be fifty-five and up, that's, unemployment's not gonna hit you. It's, it's, the demand's either there or it's not.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhagen, thank you.
So, Mayor, just to, and Council, just to recap, um, you've heard from both developers, both applicants for both, the two projects in question in Region Five. And so the question again is, um, staff is just looking for guidance as to whether or not Council wants to, um, support one, both, or neither. Um, again, as mentioned, the, the timeline is abbreviated, uh, it's not necessarily a developer's fault. A lot of it's driven by the state timeline, and it's just try, it's, it's a long process, it's compressed. But it kinda is what it is, so that's why we, we bring it to you as soon as we're, you know, it's ripe to bring to you. But again, the question for the Council is whether or not to support one, both, or neither of the two projects. And the idea would be to bring back, if there is, if there is support, to bring back the resolutions of, uh, one or both or neither next, next week.
So, do we need to let you know today, or do we need to let you know next week?
You know, ideally, if we could get a sense, that would be, be good. But, um, you know, it's possible we could present both next week, and you could vote on, um, up or down on one or both next week.
Okay, so, could we present them both next week and then let the Council vote on it? Either or, next week?
We could, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Chris, out of curiosity, are single-family homes, like, what is our process, or do we have any incentives? How are we going about, you know, targeting that audience? And I'm talking about affordable housing, like, maybe two-hundred thousand and below.
Right, so, the city in terms of incentivizing, we don't have a significant program, but we do have, you know, we have Home Dollars where we participate with the Chodo. Um, that's a relatively small program. Um, economic incentive-wise, you know, we do have six neighborhood empowerment zones in the city. Uh, so, development of a single-family home in one of those six districts, um, you could be eligible for city tax waiver.
Down payment assistance?
Could be have down payment assistance from our, um, our HUD program as well. So, there are, we do have some programs, but in terms of the city, you know, pursuing a large-scale, single-family project, we don't have, um, we don't have much, much in the term, in the way of that.
Is it a, is it a particular reason, we don't have much in the way of that?
Financing. HUD allocates us a certain amount every year, and it's based on a formula at the HUD level, which is based on our population and income limits and the, and, and a variety of factors. But they give us that certain allocation every year, and that's what we have to work with. This program is at the state level, of course, and so you're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars that they're able to work with. But as you can see, they tend towards the multifamily, uh, because you get your most bang for your buck in terms of, you know, you get more dwelling units per project with a multifamily apartment complex, so...
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Now it's a time for any citizen who wish to speak. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, she'll call your name. The green light will come on at the beginning, uh, when it's time for you to speak, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. Mr. City Clerk, do we have?
Gary Robbins, ninety-eight oh-five Phelan Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you.
I've sat here and listened to this about all this housing and everything else. Like I said, we have housing, we have housing, we deal with single families. Most of them's two, three, four-bedroom. Now, what's projected there was all seniors, just like the one that's over there on the northeast corner, northwest corner over there, supposed to be senior living, uh, you know, advanced, whatever like that. I hadn't heard nothing said about that at all, because nobody's contradicted, but y'all trying to go on with some more housing, and you've already got that. You said that we had a, a drop in, in citizenship of Beaumont. I agree with you. And they said there's seventeen thousand old people now living in Beaumont? If the tax rates didn't keep going up and up, and I know what they did to the appraisal district in this area, I feel it every year, and they went up tremendously on the value. That's how they get you. Uh, if you didn't have the old people that are living in their little houses right now, that had to pay a thousand, twelve-hundred dollars, fifteen-hundred dollars a year on property taxes, you know, you can freeze it, yes, but what, you gotta be seventy-five? I'm not an attorney, I'd have to ask one of y'all, two or three, or whatever you are, attorneys. But now you're sitting there, and you, now you're wanting to put in more housing? I don't give a damn blame if it's for old people or what. You're looking at two different places. The gentleman that was up there earlier was, was telling you he was gonna do one off of Cardinal Drive. They don't move it from College Street to Cardinal Drive. If you look around the city of Beaumont right now, there's more housing projects going on, more housing projects here than any other place in the state of Texas. You got contractors out of Austin. Why, why do they wanna come here and spend so damn much mu, excuse my French? Why do they wanna come here and spend so much money in our area? And we got less than anybody else. We, 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 you know, we got less people here, but they wanna spend more money here. And I don't understand it, because all it does is jack the evaluations up, the evaluations, for everybody else that does not wanna sell out for that kinda stuff. And so, I mean, I, I'm sitting here and I'm looking, I'm, I'm sixty-seven years old, I'm still working every day. I'm a general contractor by license. I pull a permit when I gotta work on my stuff. During Hurricane Rita, Hurricane Harvey, Hurricane Ike, I was doing it. But now, I don't, I choose not to do it no more. That's my, not that I can't, but you got manpower, and you're mentioning contractors, local contractors? We got some of the best contractors around here, you concrete people and everybody else. But this project you're doing on one oh, uh, over there on Phelan and over north of one oh five, where they coming from? They coming out of Houston, Dallas, Austin, everywhere else. You got, you got some general contractors that are the best in, best in this area for the last hundred years. One of them's is, uh, I, I can't mention it, but, but, but they're, they're right here, they've been here. They built this place, and all the kids in there, they gonna be leaving. All the young people leaving because there's nothing to do in Beaumont. That's why I was backing my guests to get that Texas Battleship over here, at least it'd have something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Vernon Durden, one-six-four-three-six West Berry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Let the heat go down before I start talking, it's kinda hot up here.
What?
I thank you all, uh, Vernon Durden, Beaumont, Texas. Uh, like other citizens of Beaumont, Mr. Guest, I want to also extend my condolences to you along with the other City Council members and this whole city for what you're going through with your wife. We all pray that she'll come through this okay. I'm here because, uh, a lady named Lila, husband named Orlando Carmier, thought they were gonna build the agenda. They have some property at seventy-nine fifty Phelan that they're asking for variance. The interest of that property is on, excuse...
I'm seventy-nine fifty Phelan.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They, they have property on, I'm sorry, Mr. Guest, I was putting for your notes, I wanted to write for your wife. They have property on Phelan, and that, and the interest is on Old Calder. And what they've done is they have put buildings on the back of their property, and they can't get to it. They have a pool behind their home and everything else. So, what they want is the full utility of their property to be able to entry, enter off of Phelan to the back of their property. They have extended the driveway as far as they can go, but I understand from the city engineer that they can't tie in into Phelan until the city engineer looks at it. What they have done, they have, uh, inset the interest to that back property where if they pull off of Phelan, it would be clear, and there would be no, uh, problem of impeding the traffic. So, there was supposed to be an agenda today, it wasn't. They're out of town, they asked me to come and speak about that issue. The next thing I looked on the roster up there, I didn't see any, uh, silver, silver balls, anything, uh, where y'all can find out about all these questions you've been asking. One thing I did hear from the City Council was that a lot of work has been laid in Beaumont, Texas, but none of the contractors are getting any of the money. We have a high employment rate, we have BISD, Amory University, Baptist Hospital, and we still have unemployment. There's something wrong with the fact that we're not hiring Beaumont people, and it's been addressed here. I hope that if these projects do start, y'all will start getting some of these Beaumont residents some jobs so the employment rate can go down, and also the crime rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erin Reynolds, Jr., sixty-nine forty-five, and I think that's, is that Salita? Salita Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Staff. I'm here today in concern for Stacy Lewis. Stacy Lewis has been forced into retirement. He was given the ultimatum of resigning, retire, or be fired. Now Stacy's a fifty-four-year-old senior citizen. He has twenty-five years of service with the city of Beaumont with no write-ups, no complaints from this director of parks and recreations. He has been subjected to working in what I would call a hostile environment with reprisals and retributions by the current management. He's an African-American male who is a pillar in the community of Beaumont. He's a one-hundred percent disabled veteran. With him being forced into retirement the way that this has taken place, this has become an EEOC issue, and we're here to support him, we're asking you. We know that the protocols for City Council is not to get involved with employees, but we're asking you to direct the city manager to address this matter and bring it to a resolve. In years past, we have seen things linger for years, but we're asking that this be resolved in seven days. We do not want Stacy to be abandoned like our transit workers were. That's still not resolved, so we need you to deal with this. Now, we have the Baptist Ministers Union of Beaumont here today, our president and some of the ministers here to stand on behalf of Stacy. Now, he has given us his permission to speak on his behalf, and I'm hoping and praying that y'all can resolve this in seven days, not seven years. Thank you so much.
With the remaining thirty-seven seconds to our mayor and to the Council, um, we stand with Pastor Reynolds, our president of the Ministers Union, um, President Elmo Shashawn, President-at-Large, Pastor Parker, is present. Um, in our union today, this concern came before us, and we do know that with time come seasons, with seasons come change. Um, our city manager is about to retire, and Mr. Chris Boone is about to take the seat, and we have so much change here. But we do want you to know that, uh, Mr. Stacy Lewis is a viable part of our community, Ward Four. And we, three, excuse me, Ward Three, and we want to say that this is not the right time for change. Uh, Mr. Lewis plays a viable part in our community. That Pruitt Center keeps so many lives, young black lives, young men, women's lives alive. So, please, consider our concern today, and, um, we know you're gonna do what's right. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Patty Lee, thirty-oh-five Corley, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and all of the people here. First, my name is Patty Lee. I'm the founder, director of Watts Home for Family Living. I've worked with the mentally challenged people, disabled people for over 30 years. I'd like to thank you for all the things that you're doing for our community. But I stand today to represent the disabled people, handicapped, all around the community in Beaumont that have to catch the bus. I learned that the bus seating with the overhead covering was removed from Spina Top, MHMara, at 2750 South Eighth Street. This is where, this is not people necessarily from the home that we run because we get them to the doctor. But we have people all over the community that have to catch that bus. And I was over there, I worked with them for many years. And there were some people standing outside in drizzle rain and they don't have a seating anymore because it's been removed. And they have to catch the bus and go to their doctor's apartments and to therapy, to the caseworkers, get blood work, and also drugstores in their building. My heart goes out to them because they don't have anywhere else to sit. And so I went to Transit and the Transit company said that they did not remove it. I was asking them to replace it. They say they did not remove it and that there were some complaints about it being dirty. And so they told me about somebody named Mr. Meats. I don't know if it's Mr. Mrs., but anyway, I went to the city hall and talked to someone on the third floor on the phone and I asked for help. Brandon finally called me back after the second trip and said he would be happy to replace it, but he would need an order and instructions to replace it, the seating with the cover of it. And also, the Transit Office said they didn't want it, they didn't move it, they didn't wish to have it removed. But anyway, Brandon sent me to the Planning and Zoning Commission and I went there to talk to them. And I'm coming to talk to you all to beg for mercy. It hurts my heart to see the people sitting out there, standing on walkers and canes. And they have to get to Spina Top to get to their doctor's apartment. If they don't get their doctor's apartment and get their medication, that we're going to have a problem, families and everybody involved because they have problems that they need this type of treatment. And so also across the street is the cottage, 2795, where the mentally challenged people live there in apartments. So I'm asking you all to have mercy and to see if you can help get that replaced, the seating and the covering.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for Councilmember Comment. And I'll start with you, Councilmember Neal.
No comment.
Councilmember Samuel.
No comment.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as been said, it's good to see Councilman Getz back and our prayers go out to Allison and just want to let him and his family know that we are standing with you in this situation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, Mayor. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out today. You highly appreciate it. On the 22nd, we do have a Parks and Recs meeting. Our Parks and Recs chair sent out an email to all of our appointees asking them to go out and identify some things, some issues that they may see and have it prepared for the meeting on the 22nd. So I just wanted to say publicly, remind all councilmembers to check in with our appointees and see if they got the email because I wanted to make sure everybody had the fair opportunity to actually respond to it. Other than that, thank you guys for coming out. You're appreciated.
Councilmember Getz.
You know, I want to let everybody know that Allison is home. She was able to walk some on the driveway today and has been doing that yesterday as well. She's getting stronger. She's hopeful. She appreciates greatly, as I do, all of your prayers, all of your well wishes and concerns. And she's determined to move forward and lick this and she's a strong woman and we put our faith in the Lord. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Getz. Councilmember Turner.
I apologize, Mayor. I already spoke. But also Councilmember Durio, you know, I wanted to let you know, our prayers are with you as well and Councilmember Getz. We know what you're experiencing with your mom and I want to let you know we're here for you as well.
Right. And Chris, I learned today that your mother passed, so my condolences. Very sorry about that.
Councilmember Durio.
Just want to thank everyone for coming. Chris, thank you for that presentation. Very informative. And as I said, my mom passed peacefully last Thursday night, surrounded by family. And I just want to thank everyone for your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say to Councilmember Getz, spoke with you, just want to let you know that I continue to pray for you and your family and with God's prayers and everyone praying and supporting you, I believe that the faith of God will come through for you and your family. Also, Councilmember Durio, to you and your family for the loss of your mother. And also on last night, about midnight, my brother lost his daughter, my niece. And I would like to say that I am so proud to work with a group of people that I work with, that we are all going through personal, we're going through personal things, but we continue to come forth to serve this city that we were elected to do. Thank you all for coming and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.